Twenty twenty five. With the New York County Commission to order. On Wednesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three. An act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Which included a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Good afternoon, I'm gonna ask everyone to stand and join me in slowly.
I salute the flag. The American States. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All to order, I'm gonna call a roll, Commissioner Stady?
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins is present, Commissioner Shea is present, thank you. Number three, no executive session today? Number four, for approval minutes of the April seventh and the May first, twenty twenty four meetings, please, Commissioner.
Yes, this is Chairman, I do approval of the meeting minutes of April seventeen presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, next.
Mr. Chairman, approve of the meeting minutes of May one as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Number five is appointments, we have none. Number six is public comment. Each week on our meetings, we have a public comment session. We're now in public comment session for folks out in Zoom land or anyone in person. Director Colin, have you been contacted by?
Indirectly, a neighbor on over the place reached out to the county regarding some unsafe trees that were encroaching upon our property from county property. Our facilities team took care of them this past week and have dead trees removed. So nuisance has been addressed, and I believe that a butter resident friend of the county is satisfied.
Okay. Anyone else who wants to address the board in the public comment session, last call? Okay, number seven, all business, we have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration, we have golf courses today.
Just a golf course, right?
Just a golf course, that's correct. Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir, we have one title change in the rest of our resignations. Mr. Chairman, I'll move the following. I noticed a job title change for Aiden O'Sullivan of Quincy as seasonal golf associate at the rate stated, the effective date of his appointment would be five two twenty four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
The rest of the resignations, I move the resignation, move approval of the resignation of Marie Ketti of Quincy. As guide, I'm sorry, a resignation of Thomas Flannery of Weymouth as grounds crew. The resignation of Benjamin Ryan of Milton as grounds crew. The resignation of Caitlin, Kalin Source of Randolph as pro shop. And the resignation of Ryan Shields of Boston as ground crew, all of those at the rate stated. And I believe all of them are effective five two twenty four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number nine, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Mr. Chairman, we have one opera and the rest is normal stuff, I move approval of the following. Twenty four dash forty four payroll to county, move the amount of one hundred forty six thousand, six hundred eighty nine dollars, sixty five cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the expense for the county of oh five oh two twenty four, the sum of forty three thousand, five hundred fifty six dollars, eighty cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next, we have an opera award going to Franklin, I move approval of the warrant twenty four dash forty five for an opera award to Franklin, the amount of eight hundred eight thousand, one hundred twenty five dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye, and lastly, Mr. Chairman, for the Walster recreational facility credit card payment, five six twenty four, I move the sum thirty four thousand, sixty seven dollars, so moved.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote, thank you.
That concludes the warrant list.
We're gonna go right into report on American Rescue Plan Act since we did have these Franklin one on there. And I'll go right to Director Corona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners over the last couple of weeks, our chief friend in, friend, the chief, I should say, in Franklin has joined you anticipating a grant, an opera grant to the town of Franklin. Today you approved eight hundred eight thousand, one hundred twenty five dollars. The chief was tracking these funds to bring on a mental health clinician to help assist the community with increased need for services in Franklin due to the impacts of the pandemic on families in town. This particular contract is, is an interesting leap from the town of Franklin's prior arrangements, I believe they underwent a change from some prior contract arrangements to this new service. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I do note that Chief of Police of Franklin is on your Zoom. If you'd like to welcome him and explain a little bit more about the arc of this program and how it came to this point with the town of Franklin.
Good afternoon, Chief Lynch, how are you?
Good afternoon, I'm great, thank you, how are you?
We're ready to go.
Awesome.
Good spot here, and we just voted it, so any comments would be great, if you could explain it for a minute or two, that'd be great.
Yeah, this is just, so we always, we already had a, what we call the jail diversion program and had a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health. But we were looking to expand it because we only had the one clinician and Jamie Helen, the town administrator, Franklin and I got together and kind of came up with an idea, if you're looking for something, the opera money has to be used to basically benefit the entire community, the entire community has been affected with mental health and substance abuse related problems over the last several years. We wanted to add additional members to our co-response program, which are the clinicians that go out with the offices on call for service. We just recently hired our third clinician and now the unit is in full swing. And yeah, we're just looking forward to hopefully them being able to do the great work that the single clinician was doing now with the three of them, we can obviously be available for, you know, more times during the day and over the weekends where we weren't able to do that. So I really came on today because I kind of heard that things will move it along and I just wanted to thank you and everyone else that had anything to do with, you know, making this happen for us and hopefully after this three-year pilot program, we'll be able to report back that things went well and, you know, I'm sure people be looking for information from us on how they might be able to do the same thing.
Okay, any questions?
Chief, it's a good program, sounds innovative, sounds great. Doing a lot of good things down at Franklin and I think that's it for Franklin, all right, on the opera?
We ran out of money?
We run out?
I think so. According, according to our notes, the town of Franklin will have eight thousand three hundred and four dollars remaining.
Let's go, there you go.
Excuse me, that is on top of the amount that have already been awarded. One thing the chief mentioned, but it's important to stress is that this particular program and its commitment and obligation, as he just pointed out, will carry forward through December of twenty twenty six. So it is a long-term commitment, well beyond the obligation date, it's allowable. And the goal of the program is to prevent people with mental illness from unnecessary incarceration. So they're expanding the diversion needs of Franklin, so. That is it for Franklin on the opera grants.
A quick question, if I could?
Go ahead.
It is kind of timely, chief, we know, you know, looking at hospitals and their closing and I'm saying from different sources of mine, psych beds are getting smaller, that hospitals used to have psych beds, they don't have them anymore. So are you seeing this as a response to kind of help out with the, with the growing concern with all law enforcement? I mean, I'm hearing that in my own community, it's great to see you doing something. Is that kind of a concern you've got, there's no place to put people?
Yeah, I mean, there's just, years ago, they basically closed down a lot of the state hospitals, Medfield, et cetera, down in Taunton. And a lot of the people didn't have family that could take them in and take care of them, and so they ended up on the streets in certain cases and when you add that to, you know, what happened with COVID and some of the other things, we're just seeing a major increase in the number of calls that we receive that have some kind of mental health nexus. The hospitals can't keep up with it, they're usually doing a courtesy, you know, evaluation and then sending them out the door before our officers have done writing reports, but with these clinicians, they're able to do follow-ups, they stick with the individual for a while. If they want the care, they'll, they'll do it. The same thing with the substance abuse, we've kind of, you know, moved into, we've been doing that for just as long as well. So that whenever something happens, both helping the families and the individual that might be dealing with addiction to try to break the cycle and get them the help that they need, but and we're not the only ones doing this, the jail diversion programs are set up in a number of different communities throughout the Commonwealth, I, I just, I think we're taking it to a basically a different level with the, you know, having three clinicians and trying to cover a majority of the day, twenty-four hours, three sixty-five a year.
Well, great job, great job, it's great, thank you, chief.
All right, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Okay, good luck, chief.
Thank you.
Staying with opera, anything else?
Yes, I just want to update you a few things. I'll get to a closeout situation in just a minute, but looking at the holistically, the remaining funds available to communities from the county. Eleven communities have now been fully awarded funds. That includes Avon, Bellium, Braintree, Holbrook, Menway, Millis, Norfolk, Quincy, Randolph, Sharon, Stoughton and Walpole. Many of these communities, as they have received these funds, have placed them into a space where they're not fully obligated, and that's the nature of the closeout, we have to find out what your, what your specific plan is to get the obligation and move these funds into a commitment. So as we move in that space, one of the things we've begun is a town by town closeout process, we concluded the first one last week, I would like Bill to pull up the form associated with it and I'll explain to you briefly how the closeout process is going with each community, this form. I'll, I'll sign it when we have completed our closeout process. We'll go in our records, but also go, Bill, if you could shoot that down just a little bit so they can see the whole form. We'll go not only in our files, but also the Clifton Larson Allen portal files associated with each grant. In this case Dover was anxiously trying to get the remaining portion of their grant awarded because they had a significant infrastructure project that was pending. But as we were in the closeout process, we held the final awards until we understood what their plans were. As you can see from here, we spoke with the acting finance director Carl Valente on April twenty second. Carl was explaining that these funds are coupled with Dover funds that have been obligated through a town meeting vote to see through an infrastructure project. And he needed the funds in order to go out to bid. His hope was that upon receiving the funds, the bid would then move expeditiously and they might award it and have the work start by September of twenty twenty four, which is in line with our hopes. The commissioners may recall that in January has sent out a memo to the community as asking them to put some thought into how the closeout process would work because our goal is to have a final snapshot of usage and obligation by September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Dover's plan dovetails nicely into that expectation. As he expressed the urgency of the funds at this point to solidify his bid process, he confirmed that if all goes well, they will be able to award a contract in a timely manner and then obligated for work to be done over the next couple of years, which falls in line with our expectation. Dover will have a remaining balance after this process of thirty two thousand nine forty-two. And so as a result of this monitoring, they are in a perfect position to close out their grant with firm contractual obligations looming. The grant that this particular application is associated with has been moved from needs more information to level two as of this morning. So I suspect Dover will be receiving these funds through your approval within the next week or so. So this fillable form compliments to our team at IT, helped us create this document which will record how much was the original opera allotment, how much has been expended, what's, how much has been obligated and what is the remaining amount. So this provides us a great audit tool, audit, not a tool, but an audit document that can be looked upon as part of our closeout exercise, it can be added to. If there are circumstances that come up that change our outlook, we can add to this document and certainly enter that into the record as well. We have two more to go, following Dover. Norfolk and Stoughton are in our sights, we'll be looking at those over the next several working days to confirm our expectation, as I mentioned, Norfolk and Stoughton are two of the eleven communities that have been fully allocated. So they're looking to have their remaining funds freed up so that they can move beyond July first with a new contract. So as a compliment to that closeout memo that just shown to you, this past week, we held our monthly, we didn't hold it, we participated in our monthly opera team meeting with the other counties to discuss each county's perspective on our closeout. As the commissioners may understand, our approach is to have an individualized touch or conversation with each community and then award them an extended contract based on our understanding of their closeout process to take them from June thirtieth through the end of the year. Dover will be getting an affirmation that will sign off on a new contract, that's part of this process. Interestingly, the county of Plymouth is approached it differently. They had a county commissioners vote recently where they took all the communities in Plymouth County and extended the grants until September thirtieth unilaterally. It was just a choice approach, I explained to the team, we're replicating the same outcome, the same timeline. We'll be doing ours on a case-by-case basis to hold the communities accountable to their plans, we don't want to just sweepingly provide an extension without the ability to, you know, prod the community into taking action to uphold their timeline commitments. So again, just, we, we've seen this throughout our experience now with the other counties, we're operating similarly, but different. Everyone is handling in a distinctly different way. At the end of the call, Bristol County turned and they said, can we have Norfolk County's closeout memo, please, we'd like to replicate what you're doing. So that's fine, I'll get that down to them. We're, I think we're, we're heading in a direction of a well-documented closeout process that any auditor will understand was a purposeful and direct way to record the intentions of the community and how they could be used. I don't want to get into the details because they are kind of boring, but the final act, the final rule rather had a more recent judgment or outcome where again, the, the US Treasury is tweaking the final rule in the usage of opera funds as we approach December of twenty twenty four and then into twenty twenty six. The, the team had asked a series of questions from Clifton Larson Allen based on the NACO review of the final rule. NACO's review utilized some sweeping words that may not be applicable to the US Treasury, it was more informative. So Clifton Larson is going to decode what the final rule means, but it looks like it's giving awards such as Norfolk County's a little bit more flexibility to move grants that have been approved and given to a community for a specific purpose. Now previously, we understood that flexibility to be, if you've got a half a million dollars for an infrastructure project and it was awarded to Stady Construction, but Stady Construction either can't do the work or can't commit to the timeline or whatever, is backing away from that. The final rule gave flexibility to allow Collins Construction to commit for the same project and complete it. It may be cheaper, it may be more expensive, but as long as it's the same purpose.
Equality.
Good equality. All right, if, as long as it's the same purpose and generally the same amount.
Of course.
They may move within that grant award as given without any additional approval. So we're, we're examining what this latest final rule is, is it simply extrapolating that intention? Or is it broadening it to allow us, the county, the recipient, not the sub recipients, but the recipient to flexibly apply any gains from those awards beyond December thirty first, twenty twenty four? So it's, it's, it's almost like a game show, the US Treasury continues to provide updates, which is their job. But every time they do so, it, it kind of changes the rules of the game and everybody scurries and does their analysis and that's what we're doing right now, so there could be some more interesting news to share on our closeout as we get to that period, but I, I did want to keep you updated, we are monitoring it and grateful that Clifton Larson is helping us towards that end. So overall, we're in great shape, we'll continue our closeout process. Award, award extended grant agreements to those communities that earn them. And right now, I have to admit, I don't see any additional funds of any substantial amount surfacing for reuse by other communities, that's as of today, that can change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Including Brookline?
Including Brookline at this time. I, I believe I gave an update, but at the risk of thinking maybe I didn't or whatever was incomplete. The, the Brookline commitment embraces the need for both parties to commit, that both parties being the county and the town, to commit to Brookline's access to their allotment. We, we believe that Brookline is earnest in doing so. We put a two-day turnaround on every email communication, there's been a little bit of a breakdown on that already. But Brookline has moved one more grant to the end line, which is progress. They sent in, I believe I told you, fifteen grants at once to try to move a large portion of that five million dollars to the end. So there's a lot of traffic going on right now. I wish it was one or two grants rather than that many because there's a lot of work involved. But I, I suspect Commissioner Stady that it would be, the commissioners hope that every community get their allotment and use it to their best of their ability. Holding back or not allowing, for any reason, not giving access to these funds would not be in most people's interest, that Brookline has an interest in getting these funds. They just have to work with us to get it, we have a plan in place, we're hopeful to have it seen through, but yes, at, at this point, I'm going to expect Brookline will use all their money. So that is your update, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions about opera? Is it one thirty, John?
It is one twenty-two.
Okay.
I thought we were going to change the bid to a different time, remember?
Yeah, we talked.
My suggestion. You're not tied to one thirty.
Okay, we do have a one thirty bid opening, but I think we can probably take fourteen out of, not out of order, in order. We're just gonna skip twelve and thirteen and go to fourteen if there's no objection, then back to twelve, which is a bid opening. Number fourteen, fiscal year twenty four, fifth supplemental appropriation for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, now that's Bill to pull up the supplemental list that Phil Iantoska has compiled on behalf of the departments that have expressed interest in final FY twenty five supplemental transfer needs. So this document shows a total of two hundred and eighty, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, excuse me, dollars transferring from one account to another. Most of this is related to the schools. There is one item from the county which I'll briefly describe to you. Last week, we spoke with our Gatsby, our Gatsby contract advisor, Stone Consulting. Joan Moreau and her team have completed the FY twenty-two Gatsby report. And towards the end of our review, it, we had a discussion about OPEB. The county's OPEB position is not dissimilar than many, many communities in Massachusetts. Through our Gatsby report, we recognize the county currently has approximately forty million dollars in liability. The, the road ahead remains unchanged at this point with our annual contribution averaging approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. I asked the consultants for a little bit more information relative to when this obligation may be paid off. That question was outside the bounds of the existing scope. She's willing to perform some work to help us achieve not only that answer, but additional information relative to how to get there and what recommendations may be included. The cost of doing that will be three thousand dollars. So we're proposing to have a three thousand dollar item funded from our thirty-five thousand dollar remaining supplemental surplus in FY twenty four. This work will be done over the next several months and will be complimentary for our use in planning our FY twenty-three audit and future contributions to OPEB. I, I don't need to get into a lot of what the OPEB liability is, as I mentioned, many systems have these. I have a love-hate relationship with the OPEB program and the way it is funded. But I believe that Stone Consulting's report will give us a clear view of what we are faced with and I think it's worth the investment. The remaining pieces include a forty-five thousand dollar item to fund a public address system upgrade coming from roadway paving. Do I have that right, John Wallace, is it going into roadway or coming from roadway?
The first way you were talking about it, into paving away from PA system.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then in addition, I, I will yield to the business manager of the Aggie as he's here. The schools are looking to move a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from various accounts to fund classroom teacher clerical salaries and other expenses associated with school operations, these are all operational funds. So if the commissioners have any questions about that, as I mentioned, the majority of this two hundred ninety-eight thousand is from the schools. Business manager here, I'm sure he can address any of the questions. This will conclude the FY twenty-five supplemental exercise, we do not foresee any other needs at this time. I will say as a footnote, recent conversations with the advisory board and finance committee, I think we'll replicate the same action we took last year and schedule an advisory board meeting for early July. And this will be just in the event that as we close the fiscal year, we have the opportunity to transfer money should any of our projected expectations fall short, as the commissioners know, we're tracking a deficiency in FY twenty four, we have a projected remedy that's based upon a large supplemental from FY twenty four, closing that gap. But we'll know more and be able to take action as late as July eighth, twenty twenty four. So the chair is all in favor of it, it would be a remote-only meeting to minimize any travel disruptions for advisory board members, but cautious approach to make sure we have the resources to close twenty four if, if needed. So at this point, this will be the final supplemental before the advisory board next week, providing you approve it.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? You want to vote on this, correct, John?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're moving for next week.
That's right. So for a motion, I would recommend the commissioners consider a motion to approve the two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar transfer as presented. The fifth FY twenty four budget adjustment, so.
Motion made in second, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And concludes number fourteen. It is one thirty, we're gonna go back to item number twelve, Nancy, please. One thirty bid opening, servicing HVAC systems and controls, preventive maintenance, repair for a period of one year with two one-year options for review, good afternoon, Nancy.
Hello, how are you?
Good, what have we today?
We have the bid for HVAC systems, preventive maintenance of repair for the agricultural high school. Seems I, we have one bid. On industrial burner systems out of Quincy, Mass. And they have bid preventative maintenance, year one, total price fourteen thousand five dollars, year two, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars, year three, fourteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. First year hourly rate, eight to five, one hundred and twelve dollars, ninety-four cents, second year, one fourteen, hundred and fourteen dollars, ninety-four cents, third year, one hundred and sixteen dollars, ninety-four cents. Overtime first year, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, forty-one cents. Second year, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, forty-one cents, third year, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, forty-one cents. Saturday or Sunday, if necessary, same rates as overtime. Replacement parts is necessary, thirty percent discount on cost.
Okay, any questions, I know we're familiar with industrial burner. There are current? There are current?
Yes.
Okay, motion taken under advisement?
If I could, is the general?
Sure, any questions?
Are you representing the company?
I am, I'm from industrial, my name is Rick Loud, I'm from industrial burner.
Just wanted to know, do you have any questions for us?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
How long have we had industrial burner?
I think probably for the, maybe at least this last lot, nine years maybe?
Yeah.
If not longer.
All right, so we just normally take this under advisement anyways, right?
We gotta take it under advisement. I can't imagine she will get to it pretty quickly, that's, that's that's some luxury of.
Move, we take the bid as presented under advisement.
Motion made in second to take this bid under advisement with an intent to play it on a future, future future agenda for. future agenda for our passage. All in favor?
Aye.
Remember what else here we have?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Number fourteen. Fifth supplemental appropriation we did. Numbers thirteen contract awards, we have none. And this is three to zero to take under advisement. Good. We are at number fifteen. Fiscal year twenty-two audit and review for possible acceptance. And possible acceptance, not bought. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Commissioner Shay. Uh, I believe.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Powers and Sullivan, um, has been bought out by Markham. Um, that letterhead still states Powers and Sullivan. There are auditors. And, excuse me, they have concluded the FY twenty-two audit of the county. Uh, before you are the first level of documents coming our way. Additional documents will follow, including the management letter and the audit itself. I was hoping to get them today. I did not. Um, before you was the basic financial statement piece. There are some interesting, uh, updates and observations from this new auditor relative to several items, um, affecting the county. Uh, I'll call your attention, uh, while you read this document to, um, the first one on page forty-one. This, uh, begins to have a, a, a look at our OPEB, uh, policy and our OPEB process. And again, at a thousand feet, uh, just by note, we have an older system, not surprising to many people, but we are considered a mature OPEB, uh, client with four hundred and ninety-four uh, planned members as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, two hundred and seventy-five of those four ninety-four retired individuals, two hundred and fourteen were active and another five that are inactive. Um, these, this membership obviously contributes to a profile that drives our discount rate. Um, and if you turn the page to page forty-two, you can see our, um, overall plan, overall plan liability is forty million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. It's a large amount. Uh, it's down from last year. Um, I look forward to hearing more from, uh, Stone Consulting on how this number plays for the next ten, twenty years. Uh, if we continue on our current path and hear more about their recommendations to, um, accelerate or somehow correct, um, course from what we're doing. Um, I'll leave it to them to help us navigate that. In addition to the OPEB piece on page forty-five, um, there's a brief note affirming the, the county sheriff's department unfunded pension liability. So they, they call out, um, the, the need, um, as defined by statute under the acts of two thousand nine. Um, the contributions made to date and, um, how much the unfunded liability still remains, which is stated at seventeen point one million dollars on page forty-six. And then finally, on this report, note fifteen, um, deals with the other uh, item within our audit scope relative to the deeds excise fund. Um, Powers and Sullivan note, but halfway down in fiscal year twenty twenty, the county adjusted what was deemed to be an erroneous interpretation of the calculation of the county's funding for the deeds expenditures under county's revised formula. Funding for registry operating and capital costs first come from the registry share of deeds excise receipts before using mandate funds. The county and the registry of deeds disagree on the formulas and on the funds that are required to be maintained in the deeds excise fund for use by the registry of deeds and the matter is current in litigation. So they take no position on the pros and cons. They are deferring to the outcome of a litigation process. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning, I'll be happy to forward along to the commissioners the detailed management letter, um, as well as the audit itself when it surfaces. Um, it's important to note that what Markham is doing right now is not just closing one, but opening another. Uh, they've already begun the FY twenty-three process. I spoke with the principal the other day. She's had access to the registry and has begun doing FY twenty-three work. So they're kind of overlapping a little bit with their duties. Um, so I expect the product very shortly. No vote today on this. If you've been so kind, we'll bring it back for your approval uh, once I receive the, your final documentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions at this point? Commissioner Stacey?
Yeah, just a couple of preliminary comments. Mr. Chairman, I got this late last night after a long meeting. I looked at it, a cursory look. So my questions are guided accordingly on the OPEB comments on forty-one. I'm just curious if anywhere between that and also the sheriff's department, the auditor had made mention of the fact that the commissioners have increased our payments to the retirement board to kind of reduce that liability. Was there any reference or acknowledgement of that in there? Is it in there?
There was, um, and this leads to where that's additional three thousand dollar scope extension will go, Commissioner Stady. Um, they recognize that the additional county liability payments, which were increased for FY twenty-four last year, um, do a sunset. And I believe Norfolk County Retirement is projecting that liability to be fulfilled by twenty thirty. Um, in the event that that is the timeline in the case, um, the county's contribution will dramatically decrease. I believe, if I recall correctly, the actuaries projection as stated to the commissioners in, I believe it was last winter, was that the reduction could be in the half a million dollar range or more come twenty thirty. What, what, um, what is stated by our, um, Gatsby OPEB advisors is that when that happens, you take that value and you pivot it into your OPEB liability. So they observed that we're putting on average over the last several years, two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year towards OPEB. That's the hundred thousand that's hardwired into the budget plus contributions made through supplemental gain. That they look at, um, that as a path towards increasing our opportunity to pay down the OPEB liability. But we reasonably can't get there until twenty thirty when the, the county liability is, is fulfilled.
Yeah, it did. And then some. They did acknowledge the fact that we're working with the treasurer, Michael Audi, to kind of address these things in, in all the way. All right. The other one, I suppose it's maybe a little contrary, but such is the way I am today. I apologize. Uh, the deeds excise, a little disappointed, uh, a little bit in case on first read because our last audit, if you recall, Mr. Chairman, they basically called us out, right or wrong, good or bad. They said we were doing it the wrong way and it took a position. This seems kind of vanilla. It's like they don't want to take a position. I know it's a lawsuit, but it was lawsuit back then. I was looking for guidance. I was looking for someone to say, here's the way to do it. We still don't have that. I'm a little disappointed. So I'll just say in my case, I know they said there's a lawsuit going on. It's fine. Hopefully in good time, that will be resolved. Hopefully for the benefit of all of us, but to have them just skirt around it and not say anything. I, I was looking for a little bit more, a little more meat, a little more substance from them. I know they're not lawyers, but yet they're an auditor. I wanted to see their thinking on it. And I didn't see that. Again, I only read it quickly, so I apologize if I'm a little.
They're going to come here and explain this when it's done, correct?
Not necessarily. They can if you, I can call them in if you'd like to speak to them directly, but no, normally the product is put before we for acceptance and vote. It's up to you.
Just taking the opinion, that's all. I know it's going to court. They jumped up to me when I read it. I was like, what? Where's their opinion? The, the last auditor had a position that did not maybe say favor us, the way that we, we thought it should be. And, um, and now we have a new auditor and he's kind of dancing around a dance. So that's fine. I'm just saying it. Hopefully this will be resolved, but. Okay, that's all. I wouldn't want to vote this today. I can't.
I, I, I don't really have a, a problem with not taking a position for something in litigation. As an attorney, I say to my clients all the time, I can give you my opinion, but it's not mine. It's, it, I'm not the one that makes the choice. I'm not the one that makes the decision on it. So, um, I'm always reluctant to give an opinion when something is in litigation because I will, regardless of what I say, I'm not the final, final person making that choice. So I respect that they did. I understand why, why you're hoping to get some kind of guidance on it, but um, it's, it's going to come through the courts anyway, so I, I'm fine with waiting on that.
I, I respect your opinion. I do. As a lawyer, I probably would say that, say the same thing to my clients, but if they say I'm looking at it in a different lens.
When your client, when your client says that you're going to win, you can say, well, well, my reading of the law, yes, but it's not to me.
You look at what people say and then what they don't say. And I was thinking, maybe there's something here that we're not reading, but let's, let's let it work out in the courts. So, you know, that's all. But we're not voting this today, correct?
I don't think until we see the management letter, we could.
Okay. Sounds good. On the auditor. So you just said, we knew these people. We were comfortable with it. Now they've got bought out. So who are these new people now? Is that going to change the rate, the fees, the structure? What happens now?
Nothing changes. Uh, they're branded now through Markham Associates, which is a national firm. Um, the same people that we dealt with when you sign the contract are in place, the same auditors, the same rate. Um, and Markham accepts the same.
Okay. Good thing to know that. All right. Excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
This concludes the discussion about the fiscal twenty-two year in audit for today. Thank you. Number sixteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Just a few items. Um, the county treasurer has provided us a March trial balance. Uh, it'll be on your agenda for next week for review. Um, I'll give you a peek that the treasurer is tracking a one million dollar deficiency for FY twenty-four. Um, he has flagged for us a review of our employee healthcare contribution modeling, uh, which is part of our revenues, uh, blend for examination. He's, he's carrying a large deficiency. I've asked Michelle and our human resources team to, uh, work with the treasurer's office to check all of our contributions to see how those funds are flowing. This is not a new issue. We've seen this in the last year or two. Last year, we were monitoring the year-end close for things, including the contributions, uh, made to make this obligation whole. We achieved that. As far as I'm concerned, it's something that could be resolved by the end of fiscal year. First step is to have Michelle and our team make sure that all the contributions are going in according to our projected, um, uh, estimates and then, um, monitor how the revenue gets collected before the end of fiscal year closes. Uh, but the overall, the balance will be before you next week. I spoke with the advisory board, as I mentioned, uh, regarding, uh, a July meeting and the chair does agree that a July meeting would be appropriate. So we're spying July ninth, twenty twenty-four as a, um, hold it date. Again, it'll be virtual to minimize any disruption or travel for members. A relatively brief agenda if the meeting happens. Um, we had a conversation with one of our, uh, federal counties last week relative to the next county commissioners association meeting. Um, we're spying sometime in July. More than likely it'll be hosted here in Norfolk County as we're next up. And we'll look at September as maybe being a visit, um, to Dukes or someplace in that vicinity. Um, so that is looming as a, uh, a, a time period when you can expect the county commissioners to reconvene and have a conversation about, um, business associated with, um, that particular organization. Uh, that is, oh, wait a minute, two other items. Uh, Quincy District Court Law Day is next Wednesday. I want to let the commissioners know that as usual, your facility staff is working very hard to prepare that court for, um, looking as best it could be. Um, they are going to be working this Sunday to prep the, the space for this annual event. Um, I want to also, as a footnote, let the commissioners know, I reached out to the trial court yesterday to find out if there's anything new associated with, um, a lease for the Commonwealth to move the occupants into and then close Quincy. I did not get an answer. I, I did, however, uh, get an answer that the trial courts want us to enter into another standard contract for FY twenty-five, which is expected. So we'll be rolling in new costs. I have to prepare, uh, prepare a new cost estimate contract for them. Um, and then finally, um, we got a call from, um, the head of security over at Dedham Superior Court. As you know, there's a large trial, a lot of our activity associated with that property right now. Um, the cooling systems within that building are in various stages of failure. Um, so to accommodate the cooling needs, uh, Mr. McGowan will be pushing, um, six new spot coolers into the space, um, beginning today, yesterday, and into the weekend to help cool these large old, uh, high ceiling uh, courtrooms and keep them comfortable throughout the next several months. Uh, bear in mind, Superior is on deck for that large two million dollar HVAC upgrade. Um, that particular item, I'll have some updates for you in the next several weeks as we put that out to bid and, uh, get it ready for, um, full blown contract award. So that is all I have at this time.
Any questions? Commissioners Stady?
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, did you, are I directed check before can I meet in Quincy next week? If we can have a meeting in Quincy?
It's all set.
All set.
I talked to him. Well, I, I booked it last Wednesday and I talked to. I'm on Monday afternoon.
Okay. For a meeting in Quincy.
Right. Because we're going to post on Monday, so.
Thank you.
Anyone that was welcome to come. I believe we'll be live when Quincy can. Okay.
In the city council chambers.
It's in the council chambers. Emergency items, the topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate. I was, I have a note on Quincy, but we've covered that. Did we make a final decision on that June date for a meeting?
I believe as a result of last week's meeting, the commissioners were interested in meeting on June eighteenth.
Okay. The new, the new holiday is the nineteenth. We don't, we don't, okay. And then we're going to take the fourth of July a week off. So that's a, that's a.
There is the possibility. I listed Director Cronin's anticipated vacation time and it's, uh, it might be conducive if we help the gentleman out. If we, he said it Monday off or Friday off. He's haven't come back for one day. It might be, you know.
We're going to take a.
Take a look at that in June.
Take a look at the.
It might be okay. Yeah, thanks, bro.
Okay, if nothing else, I'll call for adjournment motion.
Did you have any dates in mind for the multi-county meeting or not yet?
We're thinking of July.
During the week, I'm hoping?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I meant like a week from Friday. Sometime. I'll make a move. We have adjourned at, uh, one forty-seven.
Motion made in second to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you very much.